Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners hereby called to order. This meeting is being livestreamed in addition to taking place in person. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Pamares.
Here.
Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson is absent. And Commissioner President Richardson. Are you interrupting my train of thought? Uh, Mr. Counselor.
Here. Here. Please stand for the salute to the flag. I'm going to ask Commissioner Graham to lead us in this salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all of those who have lost their lives in war and in COVID. Thank you.
Mr. President, for the record, Commissioner Cooper has joined us.
Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Uh, Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
In that case, let's move to public comment session. Tonight's meeting is a combined conference slash board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. So if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on agenda items only, please come to the microphone and state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There will be time later in the evening for public comment on any other items. So I ask you to please limit your comments to agenda items only. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that there's no one wishing to speak at this time. Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinances or introduction and first reading. Do we have any introductions and ordinance and resolutions for first reading?
No, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance or resolution for listening purposes only?
No, Mr. President.
On second reading and public hearing?
No, Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 1 through 3, which are advisory consent. These resolutions are reappointments to the Office of Emergency Management, Office of the Sheriff, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Uh, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Three members, uh, three gentlemen to be reappointed, as Mr. President said, to the Office of Emergency Management as coordinators, deputy coordinators, John Congals, Amir Jones, and Esther O'Pigliola.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to take and a second to take Resolutions 1, 2, 3 as one?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Cooper, second by Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 4, which is an assertion for the 2022 county budget, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is a budget assertion in the amount of $67,859 to support the, um, uh, the advisory board for the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. Uh, it's the Human Services Advisory Council. It's an 18-member board that was established in 1983, and the board provides a forum for public input and participation in Department of Human Services decision-making and resource
Mr. Paul Aveckio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? I, I just have one. You have an 18-member board? And how does that work? Have you ever attended one of those board meetings with 18 different?
I have not.
Personality?
I have not, Mr. President.
Anybody in here from the administration ever attended one of those meetings?
Uh, I've, members of Mr. Ronald's team attend, uh, from his department. Uh, I could give you the names of those who regularly attend, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mercado, second by Pamares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to Resolution Number 5, which is from the Office of the County Clerk, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Um, Mr. President, Mr. Durkin, uh, will lead this discussion as long as with, excuse me, Mr. Sayers and Mr. Williams. I don't know if Mr. Durkin's gotten here yet, but Mr. Sayers and Mr. Williams from Election Graphics are here to address this item and answer your question.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Uh, my name is William Sayers. I'm the Vice President and General Counsel for Election Graphics. Uh, this contract is for election services, for a new electronic management system for the, uh, system, and it's, this contract, specific contract, that's why I got Mr. Williams here. This specific contract is for the tally on election night. Like, in example, Mr. Williams was here last night around midnight with the Newark municipal election. So there are a lot of things that are done both before the election, the night of the election, and then post-election. So that's what this is for. In fact, if you read it, it says, "Office of the County Clerk Contract with Election Graphics, Inc., to provide Democracy Suite Election Management System, EMS." We don't provide the system. We provide the support services for that system. That system is bought by some other vendor.
That's a good distinction.
I can hear the...
Oh, you want to repeat that?
Yes.
Could you just make sure you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Don't keep going back and forth a little bit.
Number 5 is for the Office of the County Clerk contract with the, with Election Graphics, our company, to provide Democracy Suite Election Management System, EMS, for election services. Actually, that should read, "We don't, we don't supply the actual system." All right? We supply the support services for that system. That's what we do. And that service is performed on election night, prior to election day, and subsequent to election day with regard to the counting of the ballots. That's what we do. For each and every election, small, large, primary, whatever it is, school elections, whatever the case may be.
Mr. Paul Aveckio.
Mr. Sayers, uh, and I think you answered this in your explanation. This has to do with the counting of the ballots? This, does it have anything to do with the programming, the machines, for how they're used?
It has to do with the programming for the posting of the election results on the county clerk's website.
Okay. Not the setup of the machine, not the setup of what the voter interfaces with?
No.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the superintendent's job. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McInerney.
I have no questions.
Commissioners. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. When you use the word "support services," what exactly does that mean? You are taking the ballots, the results from the machine, and then...
Yeah, I think Mr. Williams is better qualified to answer that. He actually does the support services for the county.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few different, uh...
Can you just put your name on the record?
Chris Williams, uh, Vice President of Operations for Election Graphics. There's quite a few different operations that take place. So prior to the election, it's, uh, getting the database from the voting machine company and restoring on the server for the county, then setting up all the remote transfer laptops and stuff for bringing the results from the different municipalities into the clerk's office, also reading all of the cards in, at the clerk's office for the Newark election areas, posting all of the results to the server so that you have everything on election night that you can read on the clerk's website, posting onto the clerk's website, helping with court orders to get any machines that didn't come in on election night, going to the warehouse, collecting all those with the clerk's staff, getting all the provisional ballot totals, getting those into the, the election management system. There, there's quite a few different items that take place. Uh, state, state-level reports that go to the state for certification, items like that.
Um, so did you provide this service for every single election that we conduct in Essex County?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you just start providing this service to us as we changed machines, or were you previously doing it as well?
Previously with the old system, and then also with the new system.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? So you could only count whatever the machine spits out, correct? Because there were quite a few issues yesterday with some of the machines, and one particular location, which I won't bring up right now, would only allow people who were voting to, they needed to vote for four at-large candidates in the city of Newark, but it would only allow them to pick two, and it kept spitting their ballots back out. So would that pertain to you?
Um, not, not in this regard, no. This would be just for the results coming back in, to count the results.
So you just count them, whether they're right or wrong, it doesn't matter? Whatever comes out, that's what you count?
It would, it would be what, what is counted and how to report it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. No other questions or comments? Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move, Mr. President.
I'll second.
Move by VP Pamares and second by Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk. And for the record, Commissioner Luciano has joined us.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 6 from the Commissioner of Registration and Superintendent of Elections. It will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Superintendent Spango will address this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Patricia Spango. I'm Essex County Superintendent of Elections and Commissioner of Registration. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve a contract award with Knowing, which is our new electronic poll book company. As you know, we switched from a paper poll book over to an electronic poll book. And what Knowing would do would be giving us support and maintenance service for a 24-month period. They would be doing pre-election, election day support, and then post-election as well. I do have Dan Peters here, the project manager from Knowing, should you have any questions, and he can better explain.
So let's have him introduce himself and tell us exactly what him and his company's going to do.
Can you guys, sorry, can you guys hear me fine? I'm Dan Peters. I am the project manager for Essex and the regional manager for the East Coast for Knowing. This contract in particular would provide services in the lead-up to the election, so that would be maintenance of the iPads, software, any software updates, as well as application updates. It includes the programming of the poll pads for election day and early voting use. What that entails is converting the file brought over from the SVRS system into our backend system, verifying that the numbers are correct, that the correct voters are assigned to the correct districts as what from, coming from SVRS, making sure that the correct ballots are going to the correct voters from the data given from SVRS, and then loading the pads, checking the pads, doing logic and accuracy testing on the pads, then prepping them for deployment on election day. We have staff in the warehouse to answer any questions or calls to be deployed for any issues in the field. Post-election, it involves receiving the pads back, it involves verifying the numbers as far as voter check-in counts, and then creating the voter history files for loading in to SVRS.
Mr. Paul Aveckio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioner.
Mr. President.
So, oh, Commissioner Cooper.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. The iPads that you're referring to, who receives those iPads on election day?
Uh, can I clarify the question when you're asking who receives the iPads?
Wait.
Um, do you mean for the election day use or post-election day?
Well, well, both. The, the iPads that you're talking about that were paying you $1.35 million to, to, over a 24-month time period, what, what do these iPads, like, what do they do? Who receives them?
So the warehouse, and I don't know if you want to talk about the warehouse staff, but they are sent to each of the election districts, where the poll workers will then open them up and utilize them for election day to verify voters are able to vote at that location, and then direct them to the correct location if they're not registered to vote at that specific location, or offer them a provisional ballot if they are at the wrong location, in fact.
Okay. Probably, um, for Ms. Spango, we'll probably have to answer the next question. When the poll workers come in for training, they're trained on those iPads?
Yes, that is not, the Board of Elections does the poll worker training. There are classes throughout, many, many classes, training the poll workers how to use the, it's, instead of the paper poll book that we used to have, this is an electronic. What we do is, after what Dan just explained, programming everything, getting them ready, we ship, they are all labeled per polling location, and those electronic poll pads get shipped out with the machines that go to the specific polling location. So they're shipped out together. When the poll worker arrives at 5:30 in the morning, everything is there in place for them.
So when the poll worker has a problem on election day, their iPad isn't working, who do they actually call? Do they call Dan's office or Van Teal's?
Well, they, they do call both, but what we have in place is, they're called rovers. So this is what this contract is about. Um, I have a rover, at least one, depending on the size of the election, could be two, three stationed at my warehouse, so that if there is a problem, they will try to walk them through over the phone if they can't. Then there are sheriff officers to transport these rovers quicker and more efficiently to the specific location to correct the problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes, um, Commissioner Spango, who's responsible for the data in those laptops?
We are. That's exactly what Knowing does. We export, and Dan could probably answer this better than I, the statewide voting registration system, we export from that onto the elec, it's an iPad, basically, an electronic iPad.
Right, so when, when a voter goes to the, to, to vote and their name does not appear on that, but they've been voting there for years and years, who would, uh, why would that happen? Is that, uh, data?
It could, it could be a clerical error, which sometimes does happen. It could be a changing, like we just went through with the districts, you know, being changed, or, um, they, they will call my office, and I have enough, I always put extra staff on, on election day to look up and verify these voters and, you know, get to the bottom of it.
Yes, we just found yesterday, there was, you know, there were numerous issues yesterday, but one of the issues were, you know, voters who had voted at that poll site for years, 20, 30, 40 years, did not appear, uh, in the system. Um, so I'm just curious to know how that, uh, how the data transferred from the old system to this new system.
I, I don't know if it would be they don't appear in the system as much as they would have appeared. Each poll pad is, is programmed per district. So they might have had their district changed because of result of the census, so they'd been voting for 10 years in location A, and now they have to be in B, so location A is not going to show them. So when they would call my office, my staff would say, "Your voting location is location B."
Right, and, and the voters received sample ballots, which would give them the location of where their voting site would be?
They did receive sample ballots with their polling locations, and Chris Durkin and my office together, Chris Durkin mailed it, we sent out individual postcards to every voter that had it, had their polling location changed, so we followed through with a postcard.
So the postcard said what?
Please, um, "Your voting location is," and it gave the name and the address.
It told them that...
Polling location.
It told them that it has been changed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, who is responsible for making sure the site has sufficient connection for the iPads? Because you need...
The connectivity. Okay. I provide, my office provides, what they're called is night hawks, they are routers. There is one router per polling location, unless there is eight or more poll pads, then you need two. Linda Von Essi will direct me if there's a location, if it's maybe a very old building and it's all brick, they don't have windows. We do have what they call a cradle point, which is a much stronger router that we would deploy to those sites. And then on election day, the Board of Elections is responsible for the connectivity, and Ms. Von Essi actually has people in her office on, Dan was there yesterday, and there was another gentleman, watching all day the connectivity. They can tell what's up, what's down, you know? Sometimes a poll worker might need, they don't have it plugged in, they'll have to call them, plug in your iPad, you know, and they're watching it all day long until 8:00 PM at night.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Uh, VP Pamares.
Thank you. Uh, can you tell, how many iPads is that that you're putting out there in the, in the election?
The county received from the state 1,200 iPads. We are required by law to have two iPads per district, so we have approximately, maybe, I want to say, depending on how many polling locations, because that does change, but maybe 400, 500 backups. We got, we needed, I think, 11,40, and we have 1,200.
And our backups, uh, I guess you have them stationed kind of conveniently located to be...
They're at my warehouse.
On the day of the election, I'm sorry. On the day of the election, the backups are, how readily accessible are they in the event?
They are there and ready to go, and there are, now, Knowing rovers there, if they have to bring one, they bring it right out.
So they have to be, so there's no, I guess my point is, there's no real significant loss of time with the event?
No. And, and my experience, and Dan, correct me, I mean, it's, I don't think we ever had to replace an iPad.
Okay. Thank you.
But we're ready in case we do.
Commissioner Mercado.
If, if, in certain polling sites, they have multiple districts, right?
Yes.
With one machine, now, is, is there an iPad per district?
Yes.
And you'll be able to distinguish, you know, because there's only one machine where they vote, so you'll be able to distinguish which districts they voted in based on the district?
Well, the, the number of machines in a polling location comes from Linda Von Essi from the Board of Elections, along with the number of districts. What I've created with the electronic poll pads is, every poll pad is numbered with the location, so when we're, right before we're ready to ship out, I give to Linda Von Essi and myself, we know every polling location number, where it is, and when they're watching it, monitoring it, they can tell. It's all detailed.
And, and I saw that the, the iPad goes with the machine.
Yes. Well, separately, it's in a wheel cart, not in the machine, but it gets delivered with it.
And it's, and it's delivered to the warehouse?
I'm sorry?
It's delivered to the warehouse?
It's delivered from the warehouse to the polling location.
And then after the polling location, back to the warehouse?
Back to the warehouse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I, I have one. There was a previous election where the machines didn't get to where they were supposed to go on time. Uh, and yesterday, there were some machines delivered to a particular location, and they were put in the basement of that location. Uh, so who, whose responsibility is it to alert whomever that someone told the people who were delivering the machines to put them other than where they were told to put them?
Okay. That, I think, is a question that Linda Von Essi would have to answer. She did ask me today to follow through with my trucker to find out where that machine was placed, and if they were told to place, be placed there. So I know there was a question about it. I don't know the details of what went on. I don't real, I'm not responsible for inside a polling location, I'm responsible for outside the location, but I did look into it for her and give her the information.
But you don't have an answer.
I'm sorry?
I'm just kidding, pal. We'll see. Talk to Ms. Von Essi. Commissioner Cooper.
Um, considering there were machine problems a couple of months back and, and yesterday, who is responsible? Because I understand, the way I'm understanding is that your office is responsible for the machines and the iPads, right? You have an outside vendor that goes and delivers these things to each of the sites. Who picks the sites that the machine goes to?
The Board of Elections, Linda Von Essi.
Your office deliver the machines and the equipment to the approved sites?
Correct.
That Ms. Von Essi's office picks.
Correct.
Does anybody go back out after the outside vendor deliver all this equipment to make sure it was brought to the right location?
That, there is a signed receipt when the machine is delivered. Whoever accepts that machine has to sign it, and that comes back to the warehouse. We have a record. The machines are scanned when they go out, so we know they left the warehouse. Whoever receives it at the polling location has to sign for it, and that's our record. And, um, we know when we don't get machines back, and we do follow through with phone calls at various locations, that they've received.
Ms. Spango, my question, um, I appreciate your response because you're, you're walking us through that you get a receipt, that the vendor physically delivered the machine to the location. Is there anyone that goes out from your office or Ms. Von Essi's office to make sure that the machine is at 1, 2, 3 Marking Word Lane on the first floor, you know, in the area that one of your offices approved?
We do not.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Do I have a mover and a second?
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 7 through 9, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Director Lombardi will address these items.
Uh, good evening. Craig Lombardi, Housing Coordinator, Division of Housing and Community Development. Uh, I, okay, thank you. Item number seven, we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve our recommendations for the allocation of ESG/CD funds in a total amount of $2,379,000 for various rapid rehousing and homeless prevention assistance activities to be carried out by various agencies. and homeless prevention assistance activities to be carried out by various agencies in the county. As you may recall, the Board previously approved, accepting the award of funds from the federal government, and we went out and asked some agencies, what could they do to help us get that money out? And you have our recommendations. Item number eight, we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the reprogramming of funds, of home funds from 2018 to 2019 for a specific project, which is the Verona LIHTC Urban Renewal Project, an affordable housing project in Verona, for the total amount of $1,225,000. As, just to explain, when we appropriate funds for home programs during a given program year, we just allocate the funds for utilizing it for such projects. The reason we had to reprogram it is now we have a specific project that we're allocating those funds to, and we need your approval to authorize that allocation. And finally, item number nine, we are seeking to extend two contracts, two CDBG contracts with two towns, namely Roseland and West Orange, for the extension of contracts for two projects that they recently finished. However, we weren't able to process their voucher reimbursement before the expiration of their contract, so we're just asking to extend those contracts so that we may process the paperwork and reimburse them for the work that they did using the grant money that they had previously been awarded. If there's any questions, I do have some, a representative from the, for the Verona Home Project, should you care to?
Mr. Polavecchio? Yeah, for Mr. Lombardi, on number nine, the contract time extension, that's just time, right? There's no additional funds that have been allocated for those?
Yes, that is correct. They finish the projects, they're not getting any additional monies, it's just processing the paperwork.
Just processing time, okay, thank you.
Mr. McAdams?
Yes, on Resolution number eight, so these funds were from 2019 to 2020, so they were?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke before, I said 18 and 19, or 19 and 20.
It's okay, that's not really what I'm questioning. So these, these funds were, are still held in reserve?
That is correct.
Are they in the grant fund?
Yeah, we awarded the funds, there's a line of credit, so to speak. And so when we have a project with HUD, we go into their program, we say, okay, look, we have a project, we're allocating these funds, we need to draw down those funds, and then those funds are drawn down, and then as the project goes on, we reimburse the contractor for the work that they do.
Okay, and this project is a low-income housing tax credit deal?
That is correct.
And it's also my understanding that the town of Verona did a bond issue for about eight, I think it's $8 million on it, is that?
I'm not sure about the bond issue, I know Verona's participating in the project. I believe the total cost of the project?
I just got that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it is $8 million. Yeah, Verona is participating in the project, and that's one of the reasons we're excited about this project. It's in a community that we haven't done affordable housing in recently, and in fact, they're participating in the project. So we're very excited about this project. It's creating a lot of affordable housing, 75 units and 95 units, and so again, it's a, we feel it's a good viable project.
Okay, it's all, it's all low?
It's all affordable housing, yes, right, that is correct.
Low or moderate?
No, it's low, it's from very low to low, and it's all below 60%. Yeah, it's all below 60% AMI, which is...
Is this a developer?
That is a developer, okay. Laura, would you like to say a few words about the project?
Hi, everyone. Mr. President, council members, thank your committee members, thank you for having me. My name's Laura Schwager, I'm the Senior Vice President for Pearl, which is the owner of Verona LIHTC LLC.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure, I can actually take this off. Sorry about that, I meant to do that when I came up. So this is a, again, it's Laura Schwager, Senior Vice President for Pearl LLC, which is the owner of Verona LIHTC. We have final site plan approval, and are working to move forward on, and tax credits for a 95-unit, 100% affordable housing community in Verona. This project is expected to close in the next three months. We have, are very thankful to, to the group, Craig and Esther, for helping us get here today, and would appreciate the award of the $1,225,000. As you know, the cost increases related to construction these days have been extensive, and in an affordable housing project, obviously, we cannot raise rents. And so subsidy is a very large part of what we request. In this case, these are units, as expressed, from 20% AMI to 60% AMI. We have both homeless residents in the community, as well as special needs 811 units, which are those residents coming out of physical rehabilitation centers, up to 64 years old. So from 18 to 64, that will also receive housing in our community. And for home units, there'll be seven home units, there'll be, two of them will be low home, and five of them will be high home units. So two of them will be below 50% AMI, and five of them will be above 50% AMI.
And what's about scope?
So the rest of the units are, so you have, in the community, 13% of the community are very low-income units, which are those units that are below 30%, 30% or below AMI. 50% are at the 60% AMI, and so that leaves 37, if I do my math properly, percent at the, between 31 and 50% AMI.
Was there any state monies received on this as well?
So we have, the town is contributing land, and they're doing the demo and the remediation, which is significant, will probably be over $8 million by the time they're done. They're also giving us a pilot, and then we have the federal tax, low-income housing tax credits for the project. The agency is also giving us $375,000 for those 811 units we talked about, in something called the Money Follows the People Program. And we are also requesting another $2.4 million from the agency due to these interest rate increases that have come. So it takes a village, literally, to build these affordable housing, and in the rising construction cost and rising interest rate market, it's like the worst of all things happening, and so it takes a lot to pull these together.
So I was thinking very well.
We're very excited about this project. It is the majority of Verona's affordable housing program, and they've been amazing. They started with a much smaller site, and when we showed them what could, you know, how tight the site would be, they actually agreed to acquire another piece, and a piece was actually from the county that was added. And so, you know, this, this really is going to be a beautiful project when it's done, and it's right across from their community building with all their sports fields as well, and a bus stop. So it's on, if people are familiar, Bloomfield, Lynn, and Pine is kind of how it's bound.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. What is the apartment compilation? Is it all one bedrooms?
No, so we've got 16 one bedrooms.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry about that. I'm gonna look, because I don't, so I don't get it wrong. We've got 16 one bedrooms, 53 two bedrooms, and 26 three bedrooms.
Okay, so it could be families there as well?
Absolutely. The makeup of our population tends to be, especially in our one bedrooms, either frankly, college students, or some, you know, graduated college, so people just coming into the workforce, or seniors, a lot in our one bedrooms. Our two and three bedrooms tend to be families, and young professionals. So that are, that are just like teachers, or grocery store workers, or, you know, CVS workers, like, that is that population. A lot of single parents end up in these communities as well, be they the single mother or a single father in the communities.
Are these units income restricted since they're affordable?
Yes, so they're, that's what, their income constricted to those people between 20% AMI, which is like a social security level rent, to 60% AMI. So you would consider anything above 120% roughly fair market value, those are those workforce housings, 80 to 120, it's like workforce housing, so you're all low and mod at 60% and below.
A question for the administration. Is there any particular reason why this had to be a loan versus a grant? I mean, I know it's...
Yes, well...
...tax credits that they're applying for.
Yeah, first of all, they are...
State your name again, please.
Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. Is a loan because it's, A, it's a for-profit developer, and we do recover interest, which we then will reprogram and use for other projects down the road. Obviously, we also get the principal eventually paid back. Now, there are some projects that we do in the home program for nonprofits, where, again, it's structured as a loan, because if they don't fulfill the obligations, we need to recover those funds. But if they fulfill our obligations, then those loans would, would be forgiven. So some home loans are forgivable loans, and some of them are regular amortized loans.
So this is a conventional one, that they're paying interest for what term?
For the term, I believe the term of this loan is 30 years, and it's 1% interest, and also the principal will have to be repaid at a certain time.
Thank you.
Just recognizing Commissioner Gill, Commissioner Luciano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question first, let me, I want to put a comment on the record, I think this is a great idea, and I commend you guys, the folks at the county, and the folks in Verona. But the question I had is, I'm very familiar with the location of Lynn, Pine, and Bloomfield Ave. Is this new housing going to be on vacant property, or are they leveling what's existing there now? Because I am familiar with what is there now, just for the record.
Yeah, so this is the old Camco...
State your name, please.
Laura Schwager. This is the old Camco facility, and there, the municipality just, and it's been vacant for some time, so they are demolishing that building, remediating the site. There were some houses on the site that were acquired as part of that additional parcel that I just talked about, the municipality acquired, those have already been leveled. They weren't really being used as housing, they were being used as smaller commercial that had been sitting vacant. So it's really an old commercial block that had been sitting vacant for some time, also had contamination in it, asbestos. We have tanks that have come out.
Well, that was my question, actually, I wanted to get that on the record. And then the follow-up question is, you know, what is the responsibility before we build this, especially if we're going to have, you know, new residents living there, as far as the cleanup? Do we have to work alongside the state? Is there, like, what is the remediation?
Believe it or not, it was not that, it was, it really wasn't that bad, which is great. Most of it was asbestos in the existing building, that contract's been awarded, and there are actually, there was a pre-construction meeting today, the municipality's handling all the remediation, and some of that $8 million that we were talking about, they bonded for. So they've already taken out two tanks and remediated those areas, and the big remediation is really the Camco building that has old asbestos and lead in it. So that's 10 days of remediation that they have to do with a certified asbestos and lead contractor. And then once that's all clean and certified clean, then they will level the building, the contractor's responsible for taking everything off. There are a couple of what we'll call hotspots of soil that we've recently delineated, and those will come off the site. So the site will meet all DEP standards for residential housing, which is the highest stringent standard for remediation.
Excellent, and I appreciate those comments on the record, because I think that's really important for the residents in the neighborhood, and the ones that are going to be living there, to know that we are doing our due diligence. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
If I may add, I'm sorry, Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development, I just may add to that last question. I want to make sure you all understand, we do not extend a loan agreement or a written agreement until all the environmental issues are cleared and whatnot. We take that responsibility, obviously, and also, if, you know, we also make sure that no one's being relocated or dislocated or anything like that. So I just want to make sure that people understand, we're not, you know, we take, we're protecting the citizens of Essex County.
Commissioner Cooper, you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. I agree with my colleague that this is a great project, and I am so excited to hear that the township puts some skin in the game to make this project happen. We need more affordable housing units in this county. So I appreciate the administration and the township and the poor-far entity for doing it. What's your timeline to get started?
Thank you. Our goal is to close on August 1st. That will be contingent on this additional funding we need to get from NJHMFA due to the recent increases in interest rates. We're, we're going to be talking to them probably regularly about this. If all goes well with those conversations, we're set to break ground on August 1st. All of our lending's in place, tax credit investors in place, everything's in place for us to start on August 1st.
So if you don't get that additional $300,000 that you needed?
It's 2.4 million.
Oh, 2.4 million?
Yeah.
That you need, what happens to this project?
We've got to find other sources of funds to fill that gap.
And it's pure building costs, material costs?
It's, it's two things. It's, it's building costs, costs have gone up since we submitted this application in September of 2020, if you can think back that long, that's when our tax credit application went in. Because of COVID and the delays, we're just getting to it now, costs have gone up 30%. So it's actually gone up more than 30%. Lumber's starting to come back down, so we're taking some of those savings into the project, but we're about 30% higher in costs, which is about $5 million higher. We've been able to fill that gap with getting higher equity from our equity investor, from the money that the county's going to give us, and we had actually been balanced up until about a month and a half ago, when interest rates just took a crazy spike. And when you're dealing with a large project, those, what we would call 200 basis points, so from about 4.15% of an interest rate to we're over 6 right now. And so that is a huge additional hit to the project that we're kind of working through right now. But if all goes well, our goal is that we would start on August 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I have one. So the GC, who's the GC?
So...
State for the record, please.
Sorry, Laura Schwager. The general contractor is Pearl Contractors LLC.
From?
So they are, it's a subsidiary of Pearl LLC, which is the overall owner. They are housed in Cleveland, but I have an office, we have our court, we have our regional office in Hamilton, New Jersey. So I have directors of operations and project managers and superintendents that work out of the New Jersey region.
So the superintendents and regional managers, they're all from Cleveland?
No, 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 I said they're from New Jersey.
Oh, they're all from New Jersey.
They're all from New Jersey. So we build projects, we have projects in New Jersey already that we've built and are under construction right now. I was just at our Warren, New Jersey project in Somerset County before I came here. So we're under construction in many different areas. This group builds, and when I say builds, they manage the process and subcontract out to local subcontractors. So all of our work that's done here is local, all of our project managers are local, all of our superintendents are local, I'm local, I've been developing in New Jersey for 25 years, and I run this office here in New Jersey.
That was going to be my next question in terms of the subs. Subs are going to be from Essex County?
So...
Going to be some subs from Essex County?
Yeah, so we do, we are very experienced in Section 3 housing, which is the requirement of HUD. We have a bid list of every, anyone that will come to us. We are an open shop company, so if you have a name you would like us on our list, but our subs are generally from northern New Jersey when we're doing work in northern New Jersey. We will, and especially in this day and age, we will take any qualified sub that we can get, if you have a list you would like to provide us. We do a minimum of 15% WMBE in our communities, and then we have the federal requirement added on top because of the home dollars, which is a Section 3 requirement, that equal opportunity, low and moderate, local, to 25, you know, we, best efforts to get 25% of the work hours. I will tell you that we have already received one qualified bidder, we have six more we're expecting in, we take this seriously, this is what we do for a living. We support our residents in our communities, so we do take this seriously.
I don't doubt that, but I'm very familiar with best efforts, and doesn't always work out. And the Section 3 from HUD states that for contractors or whomever, 25% of new employees.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, so when did they change it?
About two years ago.
Okay, I have to look that up.
I can, here's the language. You go, I'm looking for the number.
Yes, Craig Lombardi, Housing and Community Development, regarding Section 3, the policy of HUD regarding that, it was a notice put out in November of 2020, but it was put into effect in August of 2021, and basically what they are, they, because of the fact, I think maybe, maybe you're probably aware of it, is that just looking at new hires was not an effective way of trying to help people get, get an opportunity. So now, they're a program, I don't want to go into too many details, but bottom line is this, it's based on the number of hours worked by whoever's working on the job. And if a person, depending on their income, the contractor is now obligated to tell us, okay, here's the income level of the person that is working on the job, and then we look at that number, and we see if they qualify or not as a Section, as a Section 3 designee. And then from there, we measure the data, and so that policy has changed, I think, again, HUD is trying to, or the federal government is trying to get a, a better impact. I think, again, HUD is trying to, the federal government is trying to get a better impact on giving opportunities to folks that may not have been getting those opportunities. And there's also different designations for Section Three businesses, subcontractors that may be called forth. And if I may add, I know, you know, most of our recent big projects, the subs, we've had a good number of NBEs and WBEs for, again, for what that's worth. It seems like there is a good diversity, at least for these major home projects. And again, I know the reputation of Pearl based on the research I did is solid. And, look, we're part of the monitoring process. They, you know, they, they need to go through the proper procurement procedures, et cetera. So I think we're all on board, we're all ready to do this and we're going to try to, like I say, provide opportunities to many people as we can.
Thank you much.
Mr. President, I have one last question.
Commissioner, I mean.
Does Pearl also do subcontracting for other local towns?
We do only for Pearl's work.
Only for Pearl?
Only Pearl's work, and which is, we have a vested interest, right, for these exact reasons. And the fifteen percent WNBE requirement that we have is a mandatory requirement in order for us to get the H M F A money. So we do have a mandatory requirement for that and we generally exceed that on all of our projects. Pearl only works for Pearl. It lets us have control over.
Frank, when you're sitting back there, just not getting picked up.
I'm sorry, my question was Pearl Construction only does work for Pearl.
Yeah, we want them focused on our projects and we have two full-time compliance people doing nothing other than compliance for the requirements that the county has.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cooper, you good?
Oh, can you share your contact information so that we can?
Craig Lombardi, Housing Coordinator, Division of Housing Community Development. Call our offices, nine seven three six five five zero two hundred. You didn't want me, did you?
I'm sorry, I have your information.
Commissioner Cooper, Commissioner, maybe we can get that offline?
Yeah, now I'm asking if you could, yeah.
I can hand him his card.
Thank you.
Certainly if anyone has questions or you need to contact them, just contact our office and we can put you in touch with anyone.
Next. Was it nine?
Seven, eight.
Number seven, eight, did we do nine?
Yes.
Okay, then. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Luciano, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
This is for seven, eight, nine, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Ten from the Department of Citizen Services, Division of Youth Services, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I just ask through you, Madam Clerk, that my vote be recorded in the affirmative on Resolutions One through Six?
Yes.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coltrane. Mr. President, this was an emergency declared on April tenth. Has that? Mr. President, this was an emergency declared at the Juvenile Services Division for inoperable washing machines, which are commercial grade, in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. This is for sanitary conditions for the residents of that facility and we hope that we can approve, they will be installed hopefully in the near future.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. Mackinon.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, I need a move in a second.
Motion, second.
Moved by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Mercado, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Eleven through Fifteen and Number Fifty-eight, which is an added starter, all from the Department of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs, and they will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Director Salvante and his team will address these items.
Man, we got the man, the myth, the legend himself tonight, huh? And he just delegated.
Gabriel Paul here, the Business Manager for Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Number eleven, we're asking to have our contract awarded to TK Elevation, Elevator Corp. There's a sole responsible bidder. This is to provide elevator maintenance, sixty-month contract, not to exceed one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This is to provide Deck Two and Deck Three at the South Mountain Recreation Complex. Number twelve, we're asking that you award the contract to Thermic. This is to furnish and deliver the Big Cat stalls holding for the Turtleback Zoo. This is one-year agreement, the amount is not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Number thirteen, we're asking that you award the contract to McRoberts Sales Company. This is to furnish and deliver frozen food in a twenty-four-month contract, not to exceed the amount of three hundred thousand. This is to provide various fish to feed the animals at the Turtleback Zoo. Number fourteen, we're asking that you award a contract to conduct the exhibit, the exhibition of the fireworks, Starfire Corporation, date of award through October twenty-first, amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand. Number fif-
Mr. President, Commissioners, Number Fifty-eight is.
And you are?
Dan Salvante, Director of the Essex County Park System. We have the professional service agreement to provide the production of entertainment services from the date of the award through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Our vendor is Ultra Artists, Mr. Goldberg is here. Can I have him come up to say a few words to the board?
And we're going to need to go back to fifteen, I think you stopped at fourteen, but we'll after Mr. Goldberg.
Mr. President and Commissioners, thank you for having me here. My name is Rich Goldberg, I'm the President of Ultra Artists. We're a licensed New Jersey entertainment agency. We provide entertainment to approximately thirty municipalities in multiple counties, as well as casinos, and have acts that tour throughout the United States. I've been in the business for approximately thirty years, both developing entertainment acts as well as producing larger-scale events.
Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Mackinon.
No questions.
Commissioner, Commissioner Luciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, combing through this package, I happened to notice that this is a new vendor. You know, you know, willing, I'm able, I hope that the board supports this contract. I think it's a great contract, but I know this will be your first go-around. I know we had a previous vendor that you, I guess, I want to say outbid in the process. I just had a couple of comments I wanted to put on the record. You know, if you get this contract, I hope that you do a very good job of the selection of performers. I know that we have a great reputation right now around the county, that our previous vendor did a good job, you know, selecting the proper vendors, I mean, performers. And the other thing that I wanted to put on the record, which is most important, is, and I've had some issues with this with the previous vendor, but not as of recent, is just to make sure that your sound system is good at all the locations. Each location is different and unique in its own set. So just because, you know, one location, your sound system might be great, doesn't mean that that same equipment's going to be great at another location. I just wanted to put that on the record to make sure that we always have good sound because music, in my opinion, is never as good if it doesn't have excellent sound. And, you know, I'm sure you do that, looking at your resume and everything you've done, you look outstanding. So I'm happy to support this contract and I just wanted to fill in some of the other Commissioners as to where we were at and let you know that this is a new vendor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I have one. So the previous vendor, like you said, he was stalwart, was here for quite some time. Are you going to bring in new acts?
Absolutely. I am going to be recommending a number of new acts to the county and also take recommendations from the county as to who they'd like to bring back. It's really a collaborative effort, but yes, I work with not only twenty artists that I personally represent, but many other agencies and independent artists throughout New Jersey and the area.
That's good to hear, to give some others an opportunity to come to our parks and perform because I'm sure some people here have some recommendations as well. I certainly do. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. So under this contract, we'll be identifying potential acts to perform at our concert series that we do throughout the parks, and you also provide the equipment, the sound equipment as well?
Yes, for most of the events, there's, there's several parts of the contract, different series for different amounts of people. So yes, I'll be supplying production at the level that's appropriate for that, that venue and supplying the artist for that, for that venue. And we'll be submitting based on demographics and, and background from the county to help direct me on the type of acts to recommend. But I work with approximately thirty towns and multiple counties and have a good feel, number one, for the types of acts that work for the public and, and number two, making sure they're all appropriate acts for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Siebel.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to indicate that the former company we use, the head of that company has since deceased. And obviously, that's why, one of the reasons why we're moving to a new company. So I'm hoping that you will fulfill the services as well as the former company did, and I'm looking forward to seeing your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other questions for you, sir? Want to continue with fifteen? Directive.
Gabriel Paul, Business Manager for the Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Item number fifteen, authorization to use the Essex County Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund to fund Branch Brook Park Perimeter Fence Improvement Phase Two along Hella Parkway in the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. This funded source is for item number sixteen that will be handled by Public Works.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Siebel.
I just want to indicate that the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board met and was very much in agreement that this improvement should occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. President, if I can.
Commissioner Mercado.
I am delighted to see this item on the agenda. I spoke to Director Salvante. This is in my community, in my district, and the folks in the north ward have been waiting for this fence to be, I thought it was going to be, how would I say, upgraded, but they're going to actually replace the entire fence, so I'm excited. I want to thank the administration, thank the director for, for replacing this fence. The community will appreciate the replacement more than you know. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I need a move in a second.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Sixteen through Twenty-one, which are from the Department of Public Works, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio.
Good evening, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number sixteen, we'll award the second phase of the Branch Brook Park Perimeter Fence Improvement to Fox Fence Enterprises. This contract will provide for the rehabilitation of approximately two thousand linear feet of wrought iron picket fence alongside Branch Brook in the city of Newark. Fox Fence's bid was the lowest of three received and it will not exceed three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars, nor will it exceed ninety calendar days. Wilby Tapia of Fox Fence Enterprises is here today with us and he would like to introduce the company and answer any questions the board may have.
Hello all, Wilby Tapia, representing Fox Fence.
So just tell us a little bit about your business, where you're located and exactly what you're going to do.
We're located on four seventeen Crooks Avenue in Clifton. We've been around since nineteen forty-two. We're very familiar with the scope of work. We just finished doing Phase One of this project about a week ago, so we do know what's expected of us. What we're planning on doing is we're going to be taking out the sections that are there now. We're going to be restoring them, we're going to be sandblasting and dipping all the sections. And we're also going to be fabricating brand-new fencing. We have already fabricated some new sections that you guys needed on Phase One, so we're going to pretty much, it's rinse and repeat what we're doing with this project.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. Mackinon.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions on this fence? Commissioner Mercado.
What's your expected time of start and completion date?
Ninety days from the notice of proceed.
Thank you.
Do you, do you employ any Essex County residents?
We currently have three of our employees that are, that live in Essex, in Newark, actually.
Thank you very much.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number seventeen is an award contract to Air Systems Maintenance Incorporated to perform the replacement of the HVAC rooftop units located at the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center in Newark. Air Systems bid was the sole received and this contract shall not exceed one million six hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars or exceed one hundred and eighty days in duration. Vasco Cordero from Air Systems is here this evening. He would like to introduce his firm, talk about the scope of work perhaps, and answer any questions the board may have. Vasco.
Good evening to all. My name's Vasco Cordero. I'm with Air Systems Maintenance for thirty-plus years. We do multiple work throughout Essex County. We're a union shop, we hire a lot of Essex County employees. We currently have a handful of employees from the county. We've worked with the county, multiple projects, have a few projects going on now with you guys. Relationship's always been good. Just looking to proceed and going forward with you guys.
Thank you. Polavecchio and Smacca.
No, no questions.
Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number eighteen is an award contract to Grove Contracting LLC to perform the construction of the new building and site improvements at the Wally Choice Community Center at Glenfield Park in Montclair. The new community center building will be about ten thousand square feet in size and will include a forty parking space, parking lot for improved access. And will also include the modernization of the existing football field. This bid was the lowest of the five received and it will not exceed ten million, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. It shall be completed within three hundred and sixty days. And Mike Ciccarelli of Grove Contracting is on the call tonight. He would like to quickly introduce his company, perhaps talk about the scope of work and answer any questions. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Ciccarelli of Grove Contracting. And we're located in seventy Darrell Street in Verona. And our main office is in eleven Breland Lane, Cedar Grove. And this will be the third project we'll be doing with Essex County. The first two projects was the community center in Cedar Grove. And the alterations, interior alterations to the police academy. interior alterations to the police academy in Cedar Grove. We're excited to get started with this project. We'll be using union labor. I believe with the 12-plus trades and unions, we'll be getting a significant amount of Essex County employees, or I'm sorry, Essex County residents, working on the project, and we're excited to get started. The first two projects, we had a good relationship with Essex County, and again, we're excited to get started.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioners, VP Pomaris?
I have a feeling I'm not the only commissioner who would be interested in knowing this, but can you just give us a, at a very high level, how much of an improvement this building is compared to the existing one? Is it larger, or is there a lot more parking?
I can answer that very quickly, Commissioner. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. This building will be approximately twice the size as the original. The new parking lot, as proposed, will be larger. It will accommodate 40 off-street parking spaces. It will be closer to the street frontage. We believe that will increase access to the community. In addition, there will be field improvements to the current football field towards the back, new turf, lighting, the works, typical sort of thing that we do when we do touch park.
We do it pretty well, I guess. They are, it becomes standard, which is kind of.
Yep.
What's the timeline you foresee? Is it the field work coming first and then the house, or are they coming, coming in slow?
Michael, if you would like to answer that?
Can you repeat the question? I was hard hearing it.
Sure. The timeline for the project, I understand, is field work and then is also the parkhouse itself. Can you give us a sense of how each one will move forward and what their completion date will be?
Well, there's a 360-day duration to the project, and the first thing we're going to get started on is site clearing at the building, and we're going to start the building first, so we can enclose it before the winter comes and start all the interior work. During that time before the winter, we'll be doing the site clearing, and we're scheduling the field and turf installation for February, March, and May of next year.
Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, is Michael right? Is there any particular reason why you're not here?
I have, yeah, again, Commissioners, I apologize for not being there in person, but I do have some medical conditions that are getting better, and with the recent rise in COVID, I am at high risk, so I am, for my own safety, I'm staying in.
I think that's a pretty good reason.
Until this goes aside.
That's a pretty good reason.
Mr. President also.
Mr. Jackson?
If I may, Mr. President, he also has above the 10% threshold that we discussed of Essex County employees.
Understood. It would have been nice to have been notified of that. Then I probably wouldn't have made the comment. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mike. Get better.
You're welcome.
Item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on the field itself, and I know this had been discussed, we do plan to turf the field for, I'm asking, we are going to, are we going to turf the field for football, soccer, and lacrosse?
David Antonio?
Yeah.
I think, Michael? Can you answer that question?
Yeah, I could answer that. Yes, yes. The field is being constructed for all three, football, soccer, and lacrosse.
Thank you. And the, the, I know there was some back and forth, the parking that, the parking that currently exists in the front of the community center, is there going to be an increase in the number of spots that we'll be able to access? Those spots, I guess, off of Maple? So we would still be accessing through the same driveway, but there's going to be an increase in number of spots?
David Antonio?
I, I don't know off the top of my head what's going to happen with the existing spots on the existing building, but I know on the new building, there's going to be 40 new spots in the new area. And again, I don't know what's going to happen with the old spots on the old building. I know the old buildings are getting demolished, demoed. I would believe that the parking would be also. But the new building comes with 40 new, 40 new parking spots.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. At the end of the day, the delta will be an increase in off-street parking. The access to the site will be from Maple, generally speaking, the same area where it is now, and we believe it will enhance community access to the site, because it will be additional parking spaces.
Through you, Mr. President. Follow-up question.
Commissioner Gill?
The, and the, and the building, where is the, where is the footprint going to be of the new building?
So, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Generally speaking, it's going to be, so the new building's going to be bigger, about two times the size of the current one. So a lot of the footprint's going to be on, generally speaking, will be along the same area where the current one is. That's why the demolition of the existing building must occur first. Mike?
Yeah. The new building will be going along, I think, the close to Maple.
Mike?
Yeah.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Mike Chicarelli.
Thank you so much. Now, please answer the question.
Can you repeat the question?
I think even I forgot. We were talking about the footprint of the, we're talking about the footprint of the, of the new building, and I'll, through you, Mr. President, I'll tack on to that question. And would this, this won't affect the smaller parkhouse? This new, the new facility doesn't accept what's known, I guess, as the baby park? It wouldn't affect that building whatsoever? Okay.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. I think, I think I got, I think I cobbled up the answer. And I would just say, as a comment, through you, Mr. President, that, you know, I mean, it's an exciting project and, you know, entering into, but will absolutely, what comes with that will mean increased use. It's already a very attractive field that many people want to play between basketball, tennis, and the improvements of the baseball and softball field. So, and I don't have to tell our county administrator, who's a neighbor of the, of the park, that we definitely have to make sure that we do our best we can, and I know we will, communicating to the residents of this, of the immediate neighborhood about what this, you know, what this is going to mean. So it's a reason I ask questions about the parking, too, because there's a very, a lot of legitimate questions about what parking is going to look like once this project is fully completed. And I'm sure, as the contractors are aware, you know, which I have no doubt will do a wonderful job, you know, it's a, it's a area that's already abutting, a school that has its own set of challenges with parking and access, you know, to begin with. So not only do we have the use of our local community, but the larger community, plus the school community, all wrapped into that, to that one location. So anything that I can do to help and assist on that, you know, and I'm sure entire board, Commissioner Primaris, our president, and all of our commissioners, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you. Next.
I would like to just make one comment on that, on the building.
Only if you put your name back on the record.
Michael Chicarelli. I did the first community center in Cedar Grove, and I actually, it's a very nice design and a very inviting building for the events that will be held there. And I had my granddaughter's first birthday in the community center in Cedar Grove, and the design of the building was, they had a great time. And this new building is almost a mirror image of that design, so I believe the community is going to get a lot of use out of it, and we're going to give the same attention to this project that we gave to the community center in Cedar Grove.
Thank you, sir.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 19 is a contract award to Absolute Protective Systems in the amount not to exceed $816,428 to perform the inspection, testing, and maintenance of fire protection systems at 30 Essex County facilities. Absolute Protective Services' bid was the lowest of the two received, and this contract is for two years. And Mr. Ruane from Absolute Protective Services is here to introduce his firm and answer any questions the board may have.
Hey, Don, Gerard Ruane. I'm the Fire Sprinkler Systems Manager. I do the inspections. We are based in Piscataway, New Jersey. We've been in business for 43 years. We provide fire alarm, fire sprinkler, and fire extinguisher inspections and services. Currently, we do 10,000 inspections a year. We have approximately 60 employees, and eight of which are from Essex County. Some of our municipal accounts and state accounts are Hudson County, Mercer County, the Newark Board of Education, and the New Jersey Department of Military and Veteran Affairs.
Thank you.
Gerard Ruane, absolute, and we just completed the previous two-year contract.
Thank you very much. No question? Okay.
Item number 20 will allow for the installation of the new intake security fence at the Essex County Correctional Facility by awarding Guardian Fence Company a contract in an amount not to exceed $431,000. Guardian Fence submitted the lowest of two bids received for this contract, and this contract shall not exceed 180 days. I think Dan of Guardian Fence is here? Thank you, Dan. Is here, once again, to summarize the firm, go over the scope of work, and answer any questions.
Good evening, everyone. Daniel Daskolowski from Guardian Fence Company in Newark, New Jersey. We got the project, obviously, for the intake security fence. Approximately, out of 40 employees that we have, 80% are, do live in Newark, and the rest are Essex County. So if you have any questions, I'll take it right now.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No.
No questions. Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? I have a couple of questions regarding this roll-up type fence, right? It's a roll-up. So how many of these things have you installed?
We have installed about 15, I believe, to an Essex County. We did a few at the prison here. We do a lot in New York for OGS, so we have installed multiple. We also did one at Elizabeth, the new Elizabeth High School.
Any issues with any of them?
Never had an issue.
No issues?
Never. Those are probably the only gates we've never had any sort of issues, because there's no, there's no issue with snow or anything, because they go up. Compared to the slide gates, they hit snow, plows hit them, and various different problems.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 21 is an award to Matt McDonald to provide engineering environmental services at various Essex County facilities. This will be a 12-month period contract in a shown that exceed $180,500. Matt McDonald's proposal was the highest rated, as well as the lowest in cost of the 10 received for this project's RFP. Robert Trapp is here from Matt McDonald. He wants to, he wants to come up and introduce the company perhaps, and discuss some of the scope of work, and answer any questions. Mr. Trapp?
Rob Trapp, Senior Project Scientist, Matt McDonald. Matt McDonald's a global full-scale, full-scale engineering and environmental company. We've worked with the county for several decades, and we have a lot of employees that work and live in Essex County, and we also, also work on other projects that are non-Essex County properties. And this project would allow us to continue with NJDEP compliance on various sites that are located within Essex County. You know, this involves reporting annual inspections and, just like I said, DEP compliance.
Thank you very much. I think that was your last one, Mr. Antonio. It's 21. Polavecchio?
No, no questions.
McInerney? Commissioners? I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes, on 16, yes, on 17. Abstain from 18. Yes, on 19, yes, on 20, and yes, on 21.
That's abstain on 18?
Yes, please.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 22 through 25, which are from the Department of Corrections, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Coltray?
Mr. President, these are all in accordance with the board, the resident board, from 2015. First one is an award to Whitman Public Safety LLC for five block brand, 19 models, semi-automatic, nine-millimeter front slide at $403.03 each. This is also credit of Two Smith &amp; Westin, 9 millimeters at $400, which brings the total to $21,766.65. 23 is 100 cases of 9-millimeter booster ammunition at $160.14 each, and this is to Atlantic Tactical, a total in the amount of $34,190.32. Number 24 is to award to Atlantic Tactical, again, for 300 cases of 9-millimeter booster 147-grain ammunition, and the total is $39,474. Number 25 is Department of Corrections, again, to Atlantic Tactical for 10, they're trading in 10 Remington sites at $1,340, and purchasing a contract for the amount not to exceed $3,073.40, and that is for that ordinance. And number 26 is.
Did you say 26?
No. You're jumping ahead. We're stopping at 25. We'll get to 26 shortly. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion.
So move?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McCarty, second by VP Pamaris. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamaris?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, let's move to Resolutions 26 and 22, 27, which are from the Office of the Sheriff, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Coltray?
Mr. President, this is from the Office of the Sheriff. They are purchasing 40 double magazine pouches at $36 each. It's in accordance with the ordinance of 2015. Total cost is $1,440, and it is also awarded to Atlantic Tactical. Number 27 is the purchase of 18 nearly 20, 2022 Ford police interceptors at a cost of
Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
In number 27, do those vehicles have to be?
Number 27, do those vehicles have to be outfitted as well? Or?
That is inclusive.
That's inclusive? Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 28, which is from the Office of the County Administrator, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
Carl Hunt, number 28 is a software license agreement for endpoint security.
I can speak into the mic, you can't.
Any better?
Use that booming.
Carl Hunt, Chief Information Officer. Number 28 is a security software licensing for $189,194. This is actually for endpoint security. It's one of the tools that we use to prevent security breach. Based on what it is, I cannot go into any more details than this.
Mr. Polavecchio?
It's very ominous, so I will not ask.
Mr. McInerney? Commissioners? Everybody's afraid of him, huh?
Top secret.
That's a pretty bright voice.
All right. I need a mover in a second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by VP Pumares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, let's move to Resolutions 26 and 22, 27, which are from the Office of the Sheriff, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Coltrane?
Mr. President, this is from the Office of the Sheriff. They are purchasing 40 double-magazine vouchers at $36 each. It's an ordinance with the resident ordinance of 2015. Total cost is $1,440. And it is also awarded to Atlantic Tactical. Number 27 is the purchase of 18 nearly 20, 2022 Ford police interceptors at a cost of $600,516.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
In number 27, do those vehicles have to be outfitted as well?
That is inclusive.
That's inclusive? Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 28, which is from the Office of the County Administrator, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
Carl Hunt, number 28 is a software license agreement for endpoint security.
I can speak into the mic, you can't.
Carl Hunt, Chief Information Officer. Number 28 is a security software licensing for $189,194. This is actually for endpoint security. It's one of the tools that we use to prevent security breach. Based on what it is, I cannot go into any more details than this.
Mr. Polavecchio?
It's very ominous, so I will not ask.
Mr. McInerney? Commissioners? Everybody's afraid of him, huh?
Top secret.
All right. I need a mover in a second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by VP Pumares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. Let's move to Resolutions 29 through 57. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Thank you. First of all, number 29, I would like to be included, and perhaps it ought to be by acclamation. This is the mother of Karen Frye.
Absolutely.
Also, I'd like to be included on number 35, and perhaps that ought to be by acclamation for the 200th year anniversary of Homestead.
Commissioner Gill?
Of course, this just, the only, and just for the record, and that's absolutely no problem at all. Commissioner Sebel, this is for the ceremony, for those who want to join on Saturday at Anderson Park, at 2:00. But I don't know if that's just specific to Anderson Park, or if it's for, I'm forgetting, if it's for the entire county celebration.
So, we'll do that one by acclamation.
Acclamation is fine by me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also, number 38, in memoriam for Pete Strubala. I'd like to be included, perhaps all of us, by acclamation.
I think that should be via acclamation. Commissioner Gill?
No, no problem.
You're on a roll, Commissioner Sebel. Let's go. Any more?
I believe that's it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Oh, Mr. President, I actually, I'm, I have one. Can I ask for Vice President Pumares if I could be added to number 41?
Of course, whatever it is.
I missed it.
41, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Mc Gill?
I need a mover in a second.
I'll move it.
A second.
Commissioners, moved by Commissioner Sebel, second by VP Pumares. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's now move to Resolution 59, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Coltrane?
Mr. President, this is a three-month extension to less than, in the amount, for the website consultant, in the amount of $37,800. The original contract expires tomorrow. We have been out the bid for an RFP for one other time. The vendors were all rejected based on we're changing the specifications, and we need the three-month extension.
So, you changed the specification in the middle of the bid?
No, that is not true, Mr. President. The specifications were reviewed and needed to be updated.
Ah. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Mr. Polavecchio?
And Jay, this is, the three months are at the current rate for the extension?
Mr. President, that's correct.
Mr. McInerney, absent? I need a mover in a second. Moved by Commissioner Pumares, I mean Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham.
I actually had a question. I was curious that, is 90 days going to be enough time? I'm just thinking that if you get your pit specs in, and maybe you don't like any, we reject them.
No, the specs will be done in a timely fashion, and the new specifications will be in the paper most likely on Tuesday.
Okay.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to report to board committees. Commissioners, do we have any report to board committees? Any legislative reports? Written communications? Unfinished business? Any new business? Well, in that case, let's move to public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on any matter, please come to the mic, state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hey, good evening, all. My name is Winifred Victor Heinz, 61 Vassar Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. And I am the Executive Director of the Wequik Park Association. In the book, The Rebel, Albert Camus wrote, "On the day when crime dons the apparel of innocence through a curious transposition peculiar to our times, it is innocence that is called upon to justify itself." The Wequik Park Association, dedicated to the restoration and preservation of Wequik Park, is a 501(c)(3) established in 1992. It is a nationally recognized grassroots urban environmental organization. In 1995, it became the first park conservancy in New Jersey to enter a partnership agreement with the County of Essex, which in 1895 became the first county in the U.S. to establish a park system. Its reputation, dedication, and accomplishments are well-known and respected, not only in Newark and throughout New Jersey, but in other parts of the country as well. As former acting county administrator Ralph J. Chiellolo stated during the August 11, 2011 Recreation Oversight Committee meeting, "We've got an excellent relationship with an organization that laid the groundwork for how we were able to bring back our parks to the tune of $82 million." You hear me? That's $82 million that Mr. McNeil is responsible for allowing the county executive to use his idea to partner. Without that infant stage, we would have never been able to put $82 million into our parks. And I find it curious that it is we, the Wequik Park Association, who are being called upon to continuously justify ourselves against the Essex County Department of Park Recreation and Cultural Affairs. For years now, they've consistently tried to get us out of our headquarters, inside the Feldman Middleton Community Center. So, I see that the time is winding down. So, I'm going to skip, jump ahead, right, and ask these questions, right? Because this is with the Wequik Park Sports Authority in the Essex County. How did an organization that was just recently formed, the Wequik Park Environmental Authority, win a $227,000 state grant? And basically, to wrap it up, we, the Wequik Park Association, would like the Wequik Park Sports Authority and the Wequik Park Environmental Authority out of the building. There is no other precedent for having three park conservancies in the building. No other parks have that. Yet, the Essex County Department of Parks is forcing that upon us. And there are a lot of shenanigans going on that should be investigated. And I'm asking you to investigate it. Thank you.